Yes. I know.
Good morning. It is 9:01 a.m. Welcome to the February 21st, 2018 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all city officials are present. In light of what's happened in our state, seventeen lost and many survivors, please stand for a moment of silence and then a special invocation by our fire chaplain.
When we bow our heads for a moment of prayer in remembrance of the students and teachers that lost their lives a week ago today, let us also remember the families and friends of those who grieve. We should also remember the students who survived that trauma and all they went through. Will they ever be the same? Amen. Our country is truly in need of revival, turning back to God and the moral values we hold so dear. We need parents to teach their children right from wrong. We need God in our schools. We need God in our homes. We need God in our community. God's Word is very clear. I'm going to read four verses from the Old Testament, which will be my invocation this morning. Isaiah forty, verse eight, says, "The grass withers and the flowers fade, but the word of God stands forever." In Psalm thirty-three, twelve, it says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." In Second Chronicles, seven, fourteen, it says, "If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, I will heal them from heaven, I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land." And the last one is Proverbs twenty-two, six. It says, "Train up a child in the way that he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." And all God's people said, "Amen."
Thank you, Carlo. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next we have a couple of special proclamations. The first is the Roger E. Tetral Day, which I will read. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas Captain Roger E. Tetral graduated from the United States Naval Academy in 1963 and completed a total of twenty-two years of military service. He qualified as both a surface warfare officer and a Navy pilot. He completed two combat tours in Vietnam on USS Turner Joy and received the National Commendation Medal with Combat V, the Meritorious Unit Commendation, and combat action ribbons. And whereas during his civilian career, he was the president of Electric Boat, the premier builder of nuclear submarines for the U.S. Navy. He was also the president of the General Dynamics Land Systems Division, providing tanks and other armor vehicles to the Army and the Marine Corps. Finally, he retired as the CEO and chairman of the Board of McDermott International. In 1998, he was named as one of the top ten CEOs in the United States. Whereas he participated in NASA's projects related to the International Space Station, the NASA Advisory Council, the loss of the Space Shuttle Columbia, and extending the life of the Hubble Telescope, and was awarded the NASA Distinguished Public Service Medal. Previously, he was admitted to the U.S. Army as a distinguished knight of the Order of Saint George. In 2013, he was selected as the fifty-fifth distinguished graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy. And whereas shortly after moving to Punta Gorda, Roger established the Tetral Family Foundation with a vision of building and gifting a twenty-seven acre botanical and sculpture gardens for the people of Charlotte County. The Peace River Gardens opened to the public in October 2017. Roger has been a strong supporter of the Military Heritage Museum, the Arts and Humanities Council, and the United Way. And whereas Captain Tetral is the Military Heritage Museum's Wall of Warriors 2018 honoree, now therefore the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim, February 23rd, 2018, as Roger E. Tetral Day, passed and duly adopted in regular session, this 21st day of February 2018, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and accepting today will be another Wall of Warriors honoree, Jean Geronimi, on behalf of Roger Tetral. Talk about the event quickly.
The event is going to be this Friday at the Twin Isles, and this will be presented to Roger at that time. And in Roger's behalf, I want to express my appreciation to Mayor Kiesling and to the council for this final word. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have a proclamation for Dr. Robert John Andrews Day, which Councilmember Prackey will present.
It's my honor. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas Dr. Robert John Andrews was born in Cincinnati, Ohio, in 1928, another Buckeye. He completed his medical degree at the University of Cincinnati in 1951 and moved to North Miami, Florida in 1952. Dr. Bob practiced internal medicine for twenty years and was one of the founders of the not-for-profit North Shore Hospital in 1953. In 1972, he moved to Punta Gorda, Florida, and opened a private medical practice serving the community until his retirement in 1991. And whereas through a great deal of hard work and community support, he founded the nonprofit Punta Gorda Historic Murals Society in January 1995 in order to feature historic and educational murals around the city of Punta Gorda. The first mural was painted by October of that year, and as chairman, over the years since, he was a constant presence, providing leadership, guidance, and endless enthusiasm for the program. And whereas Dr. Bob had a passion for kids and the underprivileged, and his most fulfilling retirement years were spent volunteering with the Operation Cooper Streets, after-school program, and serving as chairman of the Board of Directors. During his ten-year involvement, Dr. Bob resurrected the Study Partners Program, personally recruiting retirees to volunteer at the center as mentors and education aides. He started the Bicycle Incentive Program, personally funding the beginning years of the program, and went on to recruit outside funding, resulting in the center's growth and success. And whereas he was one of the founding members of the Peace River Antique Car Club of America, a longtime active member of the Kiwanis Club, and the Good Shepherd Episcopal Church of Punta Gorda, and a recipient of the Service Above Self Award from the Rotary Club of Punta Gorda in 2001. And whereas his philanthropy impacted our community in so many ways, he encouraged his fellow citizens to donate and participate in community efforts to improve the lives of others, which in turn had a profound effect on the city of Punta Gorda. And whereas a celebration of life service will be held on Saturday, February 24th, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. in the Church of the Good Shepherd to remember him. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim, February 24th, 2018, as Dr. Robert John Andrews Day, passed and duly adopted in regular session this 21st day of February 2018, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and accepting his daughter Judy Waldrop. And Judy, if you'd like to come up here and accept this and make comments, and there's a beautiful bouquet here for you.
Well, on behalf of my family and my dad, of course, I thank you very much for honoring him like this. He truly loved Punta Gorda. That was just, he talked about Punta Gorda all the time, besides all his other stories that I'm sure some of you have heard. But anyway, we welcome you all to come and celebrate with us at our church this Saturday at 2:00, and we have a little reception afterwards. But thank you so much, and we really treasure this. Thank you, and thanks for the flowers.
Okay, next is introduction of board or committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a board or committee and you would like to introduce yourself, you could take this microphone over here.
I'm John Tiller. I'm a nominee for the General Employees Pension Board. I am currently primarily retired, although a little consulting. In fact, I have to leave this meeting to go to a conference call. But I'm an actuary by background. I'm also a chartered enterprise risk analyst, which is somebody trained to look at all the potential problems in an organization or a scheme, if you might say, for pensions. I have pretty deep experience either doing or overseeing cash flow testing, which is the projection of liabilities and assets going forward, asset liability management. Definitely trained in that, as I've done a fair amount of it. I have served on or chaired several investment committees for, asset management committees for insurance companies and set investment strategies. I think I have a skill set that would be fairly unique and fairly beneficial to the city, and would appreciate the opportunity to give something back and serve a little bit if I get the chance.
Thank you.
So I'll be on later, so if you have any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Bob Bartel, and I've been a member of the Board of Trustees of the General Employees Pension Fund for the last four years, and I agreed to serve for another term until I heard the qualifications of the gentleman that you just heard from, at which point I said I thought that I ought to give way and let him serve. But there's also an opening on the Police Pension Board, and so I've offered my name and nomination for that board. I have a PhD in finance. I wrote my doctoral dissertation on the investment of pension funds, served on the Board of Trustees of a nationwide pension fund organization, and I've enjoyed the last four years working with the General Employees Board members, and I'm looking forward, if you agree, to serving with the Police Pension Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Roger Peterson, and I'm interested in the opening on the Planning Commission. I just wanted to give you a brief history of why I think that's important, and so, well, it's a real good fit for me. I was with Target for thirty-five years. I retired in 2001. Part of my responsibilities in the last fifteen years, I was director of planning and engineering. I was responsible for locating, designing, and building distribution centers and material handling. We built distribution centers from New York to California, Minnesota to Texas, and many areas in between. So I feel for me, I was kind of the developer, if you will. So I sat on the other side of the table and talked to many city government officials, state officials, and county officials. After retiring in 2001, I was going to take it easy and fish and boat and golf, which I did. But then Hurricane Charlie came in 2004, and that changed all of that. I ended up as a member of Team Punta Gorda for eight years. I was president for five years. And I also was a member of the County Economic Council for three years, and I also sat on the Economic Development Committee for the City of Punta Gorda. So with that background and my interests, I'd really like to have the opportunity to sit on the Planning Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board or committee member nominee introductions. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the public hearing agenda, which we do not have any public hearings or quasi-judicial public hearings, but we do have a second reading on the floodplain changes. So if anybody would like to speak on that second reading, on that ordinance, GA 01-18, now would be the time, if you would like to speak on that. Okay, seeing none, we'll move into that item.
Yes, and this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter Seven, Building Regulations, Article Five, Floodplain Management Code, Section 304, Manufactured Homes, and Technical Amendment to the Florida Building Code, R 322.2.1, Elevation Requirements to Increase the Minimum Flood for Buildings and Structures in Flood Hazard Areas Pursued to the Florida Building Code, Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you. Our building official is here. Does anybody have any questions or changes to this ordinance? Anybody?
I'd like to move approval.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve GA 01-18. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have one, two, three items on there, approval of the minutes, and two legal invoices. Does any, do any council members have anything they'd like to pull? No. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items. Does anybody want to comment on the consent agenda?
I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Well, that went really fast. The rest, I don't know about. Okay, now we get into the regular agenda, which includes everything else that we're going to talk about today, so you'll have time right now to comment on any of these items. The purchase and color selection of rollout carts for semi-automatic refuse collection, which you see our examples up here. The award to Wyler Engineering for Gilchrist Park 2A and 2B. The award of the Southeast Drilling Services for the water production wells. Discussion of medical marijuana treatment centers within city limits. Discussion regarding the establishment of an airport protection overlay. Discussion, this is where this gets long, when you see all this discussion words. This is going to be a long meeting. Discussion regarding the establishment of an interchange commercial area zoning district. Discussion regarding an amendment to the special exception termination timeline. Also, we have the status report of the city council meetings, which looks really great, and the Gilchrist Landing Day Dock, Pickleplex signage, and the Premier Auction signage. So if you'd like to speak on any one of those items, now would be your time. So take this podium over here, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Kathy Getz, Historic District. I'd just like to make a comment on the Gilchrist Day Docks. I know the, what you had in the agenda was that it has to do with people parking overnight. What is, from someone who lives two houses away, what is actually happening there is these are people who are live aboard. They use the dumpsters there for their garbage. They get free mooring because they're on the hook. They have a free day dock. One of them has even put up his own bumpers on the dock there, comes in every day, gets in his car, which has free parking, free pump out, and no taxes. So it's becoming a live aboard little community down there. And so just wanted you to know that and be aware that that's really what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Macy. I'm with Liberate Physician Centers. I just helped a doctor, Dan Smith, open up a practice for patients to obtain medical marijuana certifications here in Charlotte County. Now, a lot of our patients are over the age of sixty-two years old, and they do suffer from extremely debilitating conditions. So having our patients have to drive, you know, to the closest dispensaries, which are Northport and Northport Myers, can be frustrating for them, although they do mail delivery. Still, patients and the cost effect is not working for them. Also, they are, patients needing relief. So, you know, they're not looking to get high in the dispensaries that have, they are attracting people that need serious relief versus, you know, wanting to get high at the pot shop. It's more of a boutique versus, you know, some scary place down in the middle of Denver. You know, I grew up in Denver, and I saw what it became and how it was able to help so many people, and helping people with cancer, war veterans, you know, with PTSD, and it would just really help the community if they were able to get more access to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheely Agar. I also have a comment on the day docks. One of the issues is that the dinghies, which are increasing in number all the time, the dinghies that come in on a regular basis and stay there, a lot of people are pulling them up onto the dock. And the problem with that is that rather than just trailing them with a line in the water, which is what I've seen in every other waterfront community I've lived in, which is considered courteous behavior because it leaves the dock available for people pulling up to the dock and actually using it to unload people if they want to use it as a dock, and passengers, and things like that. When they actually store their dinghies on the dock, it makes the dock unavailable for that use, and it's really not courteous.
Anybody else? Regular agenda. Make your way toward the podium.
And Gary Skellicorn, Punta Gorda citizen, also a Buckeye. A comment will be quick. I guess my concern is the Harbor Walk activity, the additional Phase Two. I would just suggest that we do a lessons learned from Phase One, take the good and the bad, and apply that to the design associated with Phase Two. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep.
Hey, I just wanted to make a comment on the day dock. Name, please? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Ferris. I'm an Allegiant pilot. I'm not speaking for them, but I live aboard out there, and I use the day dock. I also pay the Fisherman's Village, so I can use their facilities as well. And I appreciate the, well, I appreciate your work here, and I appreciate having that day dock available. And if any of you want to have a conversation later about what happens out there, I'm more than willing to have a conversation with you. I appreciate you being involved, and all of you, I can, I've only been in Punta Gorda for a couple of years, and everyone's been really welcoming, and you can tell that you guys all want Punta Gorda to be a great place to live, and we do too. So I just want to say that it's a valuable resource, and I hope that we can do whatever we need to do to make sure that it's still available. I know there's been some issues with people leaving dinghies at the dock and things like that, and we want to be good members of the community and good neighbors. So whatever we can do to help you all out, we would love to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call, so if you want to talk, come toward the podium.
Hi, my name's Karen Hotsey. I'm also a live aboard. I'm a nurse up at Fawcett, and I just wanted to address as well any concerns of anyone else that lives in the area, because I do understand having people in the area that you don't know is a little scary, and people leaving things at the dock and parking where they shouldn't park. And we would like to be good citizens here, and we try to pick up any trash we see in the area and note people in the area that maybe are stepping across the line or, you know, not doing their part. So I just wanted to say that we would also like to be good citizens here, so let us know if there's anything we can do.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more people getting up, we're moving into the purchase and color selection of rollout carts for semi-automated garbage collection.
Giving you some samples.
And I have the color chips, too.
Yeah, we've got some over here.
Good morning. Mary in Pace, Procurement Manager for the Record. Procurement solicited various rollout cart manufacturers for pricing based on previously established contracts through national consortium or what have you. We received three responses. Only one manufacturer does make the forty-eight size, gallon size container, which is the same as the container that we use for recycling at this time, and they happen to have been the lowest price that came in. Aqua provided us a color chart based on their recommendations, which is on the board for you to see, and we're asking for approval of the vendor and color selection.
Can you show the chart of all the colors? What we'd like you to do first is approve the vendor, so get that out of the way.
Good idea.
That's the easy part.
That's the easy part. Let's go for the low-hanging fruit first.
Do we have?
I'll make a motion that we approve the vendor.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the award to the vendor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
This chart is not going to work. We need to show all the colors.
They had it in their presentation. They had a good one.
I just want to know if the person that did this was colorblind, because honestly, this is ridiculous. I can't imagine we would put any of these colors in our city. Keep in mind, we're going to be looking at these twice a week, hundreds of them, twice a week, every week, for the rest of our life, and there's no way I want one of those green or blue carts in my yard. I'm sorry, I just, those are horrible colors. I think it needs to be unobtrusive, easy on the eyes, so it doesn't just jump out and make everybody throw up when they look at it. This is, these are just very horrible colors. I'm sorry, I, you know, it needs to be brown or black, or something very simple, in my humble opinion.
Okay, so I'll piggyback on that.
While you're doing that, I, actually, when I sent my newsletter out, I asked people to email me what their preference was, and I got ninety-five responses. And that, it was pretty much people looking for something natural that would blend in. There was no overwhelming, like, grand winner of color, although it seems like the preference was more toward the
Yeah, that's good.
The gray or the dark, definitely a preference toward the granite or the stone colors. Although there was some expression of, don't know if we really want to spend $10,000 to pay for the extra, although when I looked, Waste Management's color is actually one of the granite colors.
Yes.
And I think if that's going to help the carts remain more appearance of usable, so that we, you know, the residents will feel like they're looking better, I would rather do something that's going to be more serviceable. So it's, I'm personally tending toward either a green combination or a gray, or something that's just simple, keep it simple, and but nice that would blend in.
The preference in my group is either brownstone, sandstone, or black, and just something unobtrusive that's going to not be, like, in your face. Definitely not the greens or the blues.
Seeing these examples here, to me, this seals the deal for me for the sandstone, because most people that are going to keep these outside, it's going to be next to their house. And I think that, even with the black lid and the black logo, I was going, I thought maybe the brown lid yesterday, the brown goes very well with that color, but I think longevity-wise and color-wise, like, we were talking about spillage and things of that nature, I think the sandstone would be ideal for that. Because if you see the, without the finish, the extra finish on it, it's quite shiny. You know, it's the plastic here, the green at the end, where the sandstone gives it a more muted tone to it, and I just think it's going to blend in next to somebody's house, and nobody's really going to notice it like you would something with the yellow. And we definitely don't want new residents to confuse recycling and garbage. So the yellow lid, for me, is totally out, because I think once, you know, new people come in, they see the yellow lid, it could be very confusing for them. So I really like this one right here, actually, seeing it in person. It's the black, I think it's Boca Raton or somebody. It looks, it looks like it would be unobtrusive next to a house.
I'd like to see that with a brown lid. It's even less obtrusive.
And then what color logo? Black or white?
Oh, the logo can be the city's logo.
Well, it's got to be in black or white.
White.
So, okay.
Oh, no, on the sands, if we were to pick, I'm personally not, don't like the sandstone, but if we were to pick the sandstone, I would say then you would want to go with a black logo. I think, I don't know if the white would stand out enough.
Gary?
Well, my first pick is because it went to the color of my house, but that's not where I want to go, because it's a greenhouse. But actually, I do concur with both. My second thirds were the granites and the sandstone. So I'm, at this point, I'm not a big color guy, but I am understanding that, the discussion here, so I'm willing to go with either one of those in a way. So I don't have a whole lot to say.
Well, and the brownstone isn't bad either. It's just a darker version of the sandstone, so that's another choice, but...
So that's another choice, but.
Yeah, the brown and gray zone, I'm good. I mean, because like, psycho, I mean, I was used to seeing the blue on the picture, but in reality, no, that screams at us. And so I'm fine with.
I've had residents also telling me nothing that's going to stand out like a sore thumb in our landscape. So.
Especially with how much we have to see it because different streets have different pickup days. So you're going to see these every single day, pretty much, all throughout the community.
Yeah. I still feel that the green, you could have a green color. There's green choices that would be different than the, than the Waste Management green and
Which one?
The green tota granite. It's not on, it's one of these.
Yeah, that would be nine twenty-nine.
Nine twenty-nine. Oh, green granite. It doesn't look like that. It look, this is it with the green lid.
I don't like that.
I just think it's still too similar to the Waste Management.
Oh, I don't think it would look like the Waste Management at all. It's not even the same color of green as the Waste Management.
That goes with my house, by the way.
I don't like the green at all.
Okay, so.
Howard, you're right. This is not going to be an easy discussion.
Who's okay with sandstone? Okay, four okay with the sandstone bin. What color lid?
Brown.
Brown lid? Let's see hands for brown lids. Okay, so then we'll let them decide if it's the white or black logo or should we decide that right now too? I wish we had one.
I think it's got to go white.
Wish we had one with a white logo.
Brown lid, it has to be white.
Well, it's going to be on the sides, right?
Yeah.
So it's got to be white, I would think.
The logo?
It's only one color, right?
Oh, okay, that would be a great idea.
Thank you.
Man, white. I thought you were just trying to keep us in the dark.
See, Boca has it on black.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I like that.
Oh, that's not bad. The black might last longer with all the hot sun.
True.
Is that a brown lid or a black lid?
That's a black lid.
They look, they're both dark.
Yeah, the brown is pretty dark.
Here's the brown.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll go with the black logos. Is everybody okay with that and the black numbers?
So do you want a black lid or a brown lid?
Brown lid.
Sandstone, brown lid and.
Sandstone, brown lid and black logo.
Can you believe that?
No, I can't.
We actually agreed on something the first time.
I had visions of an hour discussion.
And they brought one bin for each of us. They were going to stuff us in. Okay, so we're getting a sandstone cart in your choice of size that's already been determined with the brown lid and the black embossing.
And these will be delivered next week? So there will be time for a motion for consideration.
Did you want to say?
Yeah. Give us the schedule.
We'll be, we'll issue a purchase order notice to proceed this afternoon and it will probably, they will probably start rolling them out for distribution mid-April before completion by the thirtieth.
Thank you.
We have the four trucks by then? Mid-April?
Great.
Excellent.
So I have one more question.
Yep.
So a number of the, a number of the residents in Punta Gorda may have a can that they're no longer going to use but would like to see recycled. So what is our final plan on how to do that? I know we had talked about it previously.
They're supposed to be having a pickup day at some point.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, you know, I wanted to be clear.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay.
It was about the recycling. For the record, Rick Keeney, we've spoken with Marion. We're going to have a vendor who will, you know, supply roll-offs. We'll get them picked up and we will recycle as much as we can.
Right.
The metal cans, the plastic. But we've already discussed that and that's in the works to do.
I just wanted to be, you know, re-clarify because we've discussed it before previously.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify again, when you did your presentation before, Jenna, if you don't take the new cart, you have to have a metal bar on, if you don't take the city's cart, has to have a metal bar in the front like these do. It cannot be plastic. So if there are people out there that are refusing to accept the cart, the beautiful sandstone cart with the blue, the brown lid, you got to have a metal bar for our tippers to be able to tip the can.
I have a question. Someone asked me yesterday, they just moved into a house in PGI and they wanted to know if they could still make a cart selection on their size because they don't know if the previous owner had already done it or not.
Sure. Jenna Blackway for the record. Yes, we are still taking size selections. We're going to be ordering a few extra of each size. So please go ahead and still go online, fill out that form or call our office also. We can still do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get, should we get rid of these now?
Yeah, we can get rid of those. Before they stuff us in them. Next up is a word of amendment, twenty-five to Wyler Engineering for two A and two B.
This was held over and the reason it was held over is we had further discussion with the engineering firm regarding our restrooms. We resolved all issues regarding the restrooms. They will be submitting us the bid documents for the Gilchrist Playground restrooms very soon and we will bid that workout. And it will be, hopefully the cost now will be a little more palatable. Of course, with the way the construction prices are, but it'll be more palatable, we hope. And it's, it met with the approval of our building folks. It's out of the V-zone, so the design is scaled back. So now in front of you is Phase Two, so we can complete that area. And so it's.
I do have some questions about some of the content of the amendment. Future garden location, what, what does that mean? What, where are we going with that?
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. When we brought the Harbor Walk Phase One and Phase Two back to City Council, or Phase Two A and Two B back to City Council for discussion, I believe that was last month. There was a lot of citizen input and one of the things that was brought up was reserving a potential location in the future for a garden. Based on the discussion, it appeared to staff that there was consensus for at least carving out a space and saying, okay, well, if this ever happens in the future, this is where it would go. So the contract reflects that we will identify a location and just in good planning, make sure that we have enough irrigation in order to service that in the future if a garden ever did develop. And that's all it is. So it's not for the design of that space. It's just saying, here's the bubble where that could occur.
And what, I guess you got to remind me of what type of garden because I know the garden club had an area, but are we talking like those raised beds, like a community garden?
No, like a, like a formal garden or an informal, like, English country garden. Flowers and a pretty space to be and to walk and see.
Okay. The other thing is that it says no compass roses, but on here, I mean, what, what are those little detail areas that we have? By, I think this must be the, it's really hard to see on this small one. They're not exactly compass roses, but they are some kind of sidewalk treatment there. There's two of them. So why, why do they specify in the contract, no compass roses?
In the original plans, which were brought up to sixty percent way back in the day.
Is that what we're looking at right here?
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what you have in that information. Those compass roses were part of that original design. As we've progressed with the Harbor Walk phases, the compass roses tend to line up with the sort of street intersections. And in this phase of the project, there's nothing particularly special about any of those street intersections. You're not cross-connecting back to the street at any point along Harbor Walk in sort of a direct line. So from a design perspective, it made more sense just to eliminate them there. And once we get to maybe Phase Three with the connection at Shreve Street, that would be a more appropriate location for another one of those emblems.
So the two that are shown here, although they're smaller than what we have now in front of the gazebo, would go away? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then as far as the intersection improvements, I know we had some issues with Phase One with that. How are we going to avoid duplicating that confusion?
In the contract, we've looked at providing an alternative method of construction. So instead of it being concrete pavers, the way that we do the crosswalks is the concrete pavers are actually inside a cradle of poured concrete so that they're for stability to ensure that they don't shift because of ADA compliance. So it's actually a really deep cross-section. So we propose to go to something that's more thin in profile, less deep and probably do a concrete, excuse me, a treated concrete surface.
Would it match, though, what we already have? Not exactly.
Not exactly, no. But for ease of construction, or we could explore going back to the way that Public Works was able to, to correct the one intersection that they just did complete and maybe that would be a better alternative. Also, we could explore the possibility of making sure that Utilities knows what's there, does an exploratory before we let a construction contract. There are various ways we could handle that.
I guess I'd like to hear from Public Works since he came into the room. I mean, I don't know that we want mismatched, I mean, I don't know how different looking they would be, is my concern.
That would be a concern of urban design as well in terms of managing the design contract because we would want them to look fair, very similar. Although the closest distance they'll be is two hundred feet apart. In our minds, we forget a lot in two hundred feet of walking. So they don't have to matchy-matchy.
Do you have an opinion, Mr. Public Works?
As Rick's getting up there. The issue was the downtown flooding project that was done years ago. There were some conflicts on some of their as-bilts as to what's actually in there when Phase One was built. So there were some conflicts involved in that. Obviously, the, the recommendation that Mitchell Austin was talking about is reduced costs, but it's a little different.
I was getting caught up, so if I understand it correctly, because I was outside and checking things. But so the question is about the pavers on existing and then putting stamped pavers on additional ones? Well, you know, yes, it could have a different look, but in, on Durant Street, you realize what had happened there is because of cover. And is this going to be at the street crossings? What happened on Durant, why that took so long is because our piping and because of the cover you had to pour the concrete, that caused us, that caused us to redo that whole intersection where if we would have done the stamped concrete, we could have saved a lot of money and would not have had to, to do that. So that, that's why we had to dig that up. By the time you poured the concrete to take, to, to lay the pavers in, that's why we had to redo all the pipes and that's what cost us all the delay. But because it was in the dot, design and it was an FDOT project and it had already been approved.
We had to.
We couldn't change it and we had to go through the extra time and the extra expense. So I think if we run into that again, it would save us a lot of money and time if we had that option to stamp. If that helps.
The fact that this is not going to be any federal or state money is going to totally change how we interact with the contract. Night and day.
Well, I think if we can get them as close as possible, that would be ideal. And then the other, this is probably back towards Mitchell again, and maybe you too, the consideration of porous or semi-permeable parking lot materials. Can we explore that with our engineer and find out if they've done that before?
Certainly, we can, we can look into that. The retention of parking areas within the area of the park is going to change the stormwater management calculations significantly. So anything that we can do to reduce those, those design requirements in terms of space would obviously be of benefit. So we'll have to explore that because we may end up with a scenario where if we were to retain those parking lots, which are not in the sort of old designs, we may be significantly increasing the amount of stormwater management that is present in the finished product.
I think we did discuss that we did want to keep those areas.
We do. We want to keep both of those off-street parking and the one by the playground now is permeable.
Well, the, the one by the playground, from the playground to the bayfront center parking lot, that area was designed to be parking area in the original plans. It's the two smaller parking areas that were, in the original design, were moved because we were moving all that, all that parking to the street. So you were almost, you, you ended up about one to one. And we actually have the ability to go a little bit over that with some, a little bit of redesign.
Glenn?
A couple of things. I went by there the other morning and I realized this is season and there's a lot of people playing at the pickleball courts. But there were over seventy cars parked everywhere, all over the lawn, all over the street. They were parked in every crevice. They could get in between two trees. And we absolutely have to keep as much parking there as we possibly can. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how I even feel about parking on the grass because we may, we may run out of parking down there because it's getting used more and more. And even when the pickleball, Pickleplex is going to be built, I still think you're going to see a ton of people playing pickleball downtown. That's just where they like to play. So I'm, I really want to emphasize that we really want to keep as much parking there as we possibly can. And second, I think we should learn from, as was stated earlier by Mr. Skellicorn, we should learn from some of our mistakes. I would like to see as much of Phase One completed before we ever start breaking ground for Phase Two because we have a lot of things that are still not resolved. We still have a lot of negativity in the community about what's going on at the park. I was very disappointed to see a marquee on someone's business last night lit up for all to see and it was extremely negative on the other side of the bridge, extremely negative about the park. And it's, everybody in the entire county and beyond can see this sign when they drive by it. And it really made me very angry to see what was on the sign. So I've shared with Howard what it was. But it, you know, we need to get the park back into a place where people like it and want to be part of it and want to use it. I know they're using it, but there's still a lot of negative comments being made in the community about the changes we've already made. I don't want us to make that same mistake twice because that is our crown jewel of a park and we want to make it something people in the city are proud of and like to participate in.
It's a culture change. Anytime you have a culture change, you're going to have pushback from people that wanted it the way it was and they don't ever want anything to change.
This is way worse than that. The sign last night.
I read it. I read both. There's been two. And then I drove by the park last night and it was packed. It was, those civilians were packed with people playing music. We are not preventing anybody from going there and playing the music that they want to play. As many nights of the week, we leave the restrooms open for them. I mean, we've accommodated what they want to do. They're not going to be able to park on the beautiful sod that we just laid. That's the decision that we made and that's, I hope, what we stick to it because it is more green space in the park and that's the way I think it's developing over time. The active people, the active people love the park. The active people, the active people love the park. I think it's more the passive people that are not happy about the changes. Gary?
I mean, part of it is a culture change. I mean, I've also heard complaints about people are concerned what the view over the park is gonna look like when Sunseek Resort is built. And we can't, we don't have any control over that.
It'll be beautiful.
It'll be beautiful, it'll be different. And as far as parking goes, yeah, we're gonna, we need to do as best we can on parking. But if you come from a larger city where the parks are a lot larger, you frequently have to walk a block or two to get to the area that you, of the park you're gonna use from wherever, plenty of available parking is. And this is not a very big park. So, and parks are supposed to be for physical activities. So if, if the result is, is that we don't let people park on the grass, and that means they have to park a half a block further away, or even a block further away, you know, so be it. That's part of, part of the park experience. And as you go west along that park, over by Impact and so forth, it's beautiful. And you can walk over there, and, and so I think that there is plenty of space with the way, in the general direction we go. And we don't want to take the parking down to a miniscule, minimal. I don't, I do agree with that. But I think we're doing a good job. I think urban design is doing a good job to try to accommodate, to make as much parking as accessible, easily accessible as possible. But there's still gonna be plenty of other area to park within, within a period of a block, block and a half. So, I think we're doing a great job.
The other thing, too, is that many times that Bayfront Center parking lot is very accessible and open. And like you said, it may be on the other end of the park, but it's, it's there, and people really aren't taking advantage of it. The pickleball people particularly, they could, you know. But in the mornings, the Y does have a lot of their stuff going on, so people are coming and going from that area.
But even so, people, right now, there is still parking on the grass. So people are gonna park on the grass and not use the available lots. Whereas, once it's changed, they will have to use the lots. And I would agree, let's, let's use a pervious surface in those parking lots so that we minimize the impact on storm water. I'd also say that, that, Rachel, you mentioned changes difficult for some people, but we've gotten a lot of com, positive comments about the park. And, and one person who opined here at a council meeting about the fact that they have to walk with, you know, too far to get to the pavilions, then made us walk a long distance to get to a reception at another location here in the community that was much further away to get to this, to the Kniff Center at Check. You have to walk a long way. And, and this person, I actually commented, I said, this is your reception, and you, we had to walk a long way. And you were here complaining that you had to walk a few feet at, at the park. And, and the person was just like, you know. So I think it's all just a matter of perspective, and, and I, I certainly understand and want to listen to people, and actually, you know, but we have to move forward.
Gary, and then...
I just, just want to make a, a comment. St. Cloud, Minnesota is a community about approximately the size of Punta Gorda. And I called a friend there on New Year's Eve. He informed me at that time that he was twenty-five below, and we were seventy-five degrees, and it was a hundred-degree Fahrenheit differential. The point being is, is our weather here is not such that we're not asking people to walk to an event in a park when it's thirty-two degrees or twenty-four degrees Fahrenheit. But rather, it's a, it's a nice pleasant day with, usually with a lot of sunshine, because we are known as the Sunside State. So, you know, walking a block and a half surely really should, should be an enjoyable experience rather than a chore, because I have to carry my pickleball. I, I don't mean to pick up pickleball, but I have to carry whatever my item is, whatever my park item is, an extra hundred and fifty feet.
You're up.
One, one thing, at this point, we also have a communications director. We didn't have one right when we opened this, and so therefore, the public assumed, example bathrooms were supposed to have been ready, when they were not supposed to have been. That was part of the, and so part of it is that I think from this point, we can deliver our message with the next phase exactly, so the public will know exactly what it is that's supposed to be completed, so they don't go through their own assumptions about what's supposed to be. Now, on the pickleball thing, there is one thing, and I wonder if we can experiment with this. Is it possible to see what happens if you turn those pickleball lights off before, and, or find some way to change those bulbs out? Because the lights at this point are actually shining into people's houses. It's actually really bad.
That's actually, one of the items that is in the contract is, is to look at the, redoing the recreational lighting on the two courts.
I've heard the condition of the tennis court is really poor, too.
Yeah, the tennis court.
That's what we've been told.
Having played it, I concur.
One other thing about this schedule, this is pretty tight, right? I mean, we're agreeing to the schedule with Wyler.
Yes.
I mean, we're running out of time. What, what, what still needs to be done at Phase One that you mentioned, Lynn? What, what are you...